God Almighty, full of heaven and earth, we wish you to inspire and guide all our actions so that we may always walk in the path of justice, love and charity to one another. Help us with the grace to do only those things that will promote unity, happiness, and prosperity in the future. So we will begin with our first case for us, but before that, we have to apologize to the committee on why we started late. We started late because we decided we have so many committees and members who want to come up on the TUNGA Committee. So that we don't keep everyone long over this. Let us start as we have three or four steps to begin as we continue, other universities are joining us. So I went forward to the Compteur Héctor's public petition. I will allow my colleagues to introduce themselves before we start. Time to chairman, Mr. Nigeria's. My name is Senator Shwem and I'm from the San Luis Obispo. I represent the Central District, the member of this committee, and also chair the Senate Committee on ICT and Cybersecurity. You're welcome.
Mr. Chairman. It's my pleasure to meet you. Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Engineer Patrick Seh, of Uwes. I represent the Bonasret district. I'm the chairman of State Development of it in the Senate and the chairman of the NDIS, the member of this committee.
Thank you, and still can't see. I'm Senator Leda Imas, chairman of this committee. I represent the Ustah Central District. Again, I welcome you all to this hearing. Clap, please clap, please.
Mr. Chairman, I'm here. Our first is the Omar Amigir, who has brought together the doctor of Shwem and Lesa Prakta, the reality of the domain. Is the is the etat mia, yani must?
Hola.
Hi. Ahmed Dambor. What can I do to you? Somebody have found that evidence I shall give before this historic issue shall be addressed and all of those are not too much. So I have my reference.
I was my loss. I believe I have the evidence I shall give before this historic issue comes to each event and the road is a matter of thought. So I think that.
May I first request my leader and colleagues to introduce themselves?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and my colleagues here. If I had guests. My name is Mustam. I represent Uwes. And I'm the chief of the minority caucus.
So you are booked now, right? Are they booked already?
Yes.
Okay. I'm actually Omar Di. I'm here. Are you here?
Yes.
Okay. And who are those with you?
Ahmed Dambor. Secretary General for it.
You are what?
For the committee, the government association. Tunga Committee, government association.
Are you with them? Have you worked hard with bigger of the table? Okay. All right. Now. In this, I believe this is the third question on this matter. I'm wondering if you have to come back, which is the federal district works to give us a position of this, of this misunderstanding between the community and the respondents. For what I understand correctly from the draft, the contracts awarded to the respondent by the federal government are the contracts supposed to terminate at a particular location, but that is terminated before that location. And the petitioners, who are contractors for the construction, now went to commission it as if everything has been done. And so you have reported to EMCC, you've reported to some other agencies, and you don't seem to have found the blueprint. And so that's what you hear. Am I correct so far? I'm very correct. Before I more elaborate, introduce yourself.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This gentleman is our guest. My name is Senator Agbey Kind. I represent the County Lieutenant, Senate District for the State, the vice-chairman of this committee. Thank you.
So having given my committee's analysis of how the status of matter to the petitioners allegedly, is am I correct? Is that what you are saying?
Yes.
Good. Sir, the respondent. I'm sure you have a copy of the petition already. Right? You've read it already. So you have read it. You've read everything it said. Okay. No, no, no.
Sir, we don't have a copy of the petition. But I know when we were in EFC, they showed us some allegations that we were given phase two of the contract, which we were never given in phase two of the contract. And they alleged we were paid 4.2 million naira money on top of the contract settlement we were given in phase one, which has never happened. What they are talking about is that the road leading to their community, to us, it has never been given to us by our client, by federal minister of Works. So from where I mean they are getting the information, I don't know. Frankly speak.
All right. Do you have additional information already? No. You have something the contract picked, what it's saying?
Yes, sir. Good afternoon. I'm going to establish chairman of the committee and the respected Senator S. Tungas Committee, my audience. My name is Ahmed Dambor. The secretary general of the Tunga Committee.
So it's totally your mind.
My name is my name is Ahmed Dambor. The secretary general of the Tunga Development Association. Honestly, myself and the entire committee, the Tunga Committee, find it very difficult to convince on the inability of structure to meet the road given to them by the federal government to terminate at Tunga. The four basic repeated appeal. This four basic repeated appeals is that first, there was a scope and clearly by definition, data in any parameter scope of work is the area in agreement with the work to be performed as described. So my first argument. The second point is that my reference, these are the basic, these are the points. There's no there's no and secondly, is the award letter. In particularly and clearly, the award letter given to them is road construction area. Lafayette Obi Tunga Road. Federal Road. Lafayette Obi Awe Tunga Road. Clearly stated in this aspect with the amount of seven billion, nine hundred thirty-five million, forty-five thousand, seven hundred forty-eight points some more. This award letter defines the scope and that is my argument. Yet about the source of my my reference is that I have two basics that is not in the committee and myself. One of the things is that when we initially wrote to federal minister of we didn't petition anybody first. We wrote to seek clarification and detail of the route to federal minister of Works, which I personally went to the minister himself to submit and the respondent. In the response, we have, we find it difficult, sleepless night because in the response, which is a document submitted and attached to it, they mentioned, and those bring brief statements, they mentioned that the the section awarded to the contractor is and was given is one one eighty kilometer. And in the other response, they said eighty-eight kilometers. They said eighty-eight kilometers. Then my final point of confusion and the community, which I want to distinguish committee and respected committee as the highest respected committee in the nation to know is that having said in one point eighty kilometers, if we waited patiently until the day of commissioning, we didn't write anything until we waited until the day of commissioning, the minister evidently represented and my government came to the place and they told us that what they constructed is actually this government, this honourable committee. That is what they completed is eighty-four kilometers. In a modern version, eighty-eight. In another version, completion, eighty-four. In the real contract agreement, one one eighty kilometers. So maybe me that I am that I have a limit, they are to admit. But my community are finding it very difficult to define this as something. That's why we didn't finally. That's why we now feel that and feel at worst with the honourable citizens.
All right. Thank you very much. It's not okay, your mind. Not okay. Sir. You heard them. You heard them, right? Okay.
What they do attempt to say?
You are attempting to say.
Definitely.
On what?
The road is given, I mean the road is from Lafayette to Obi Awe up to Tunga. But what we were given and it is stated in the scope of works and the bill of quantities reflect the scope of works. The scope of works says the section of the road being considered presently is Lafayette Obi Awe section eighty-eight kilometers out of the one hundred and eighteen kilometers. They didn't reflect in the bill of quantities one hundred and eighty kilometers. They talked about eighty-eight kilometers. And actually, when we were doing the construction, we ended up with eighty-four kilometers because we did eighty-four and we claimed eighty-four. We didn't claim more than that. But in the scope of works and the bill of quantities and the contract we had signed and gave to and the project was commissioned and we were paid everything, even the maintenance certificate, we got it. So I don't know. They are talking about additional thirty kilometers. It's not in the bill.
All right. Mr. Chairman, for your mind. Is alarm to allow my distinguished colleagues to give their answer?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, distinguished colleagues. I've invited guests to good afternoon. My name is Senator Kisho Oukumar. I represent the South. I'm the chairman of this committee and National Security. Also, I'm a part of this committee. You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the opportunity to ask some questions. I am a construction engineer. I'm a sitting here, senator, but I am also a field engineer in the construction. My question is going to the petition. One. Did you look at the bill of quantity of this project? Petitioner.
Yes, sir.
My question is going to you. Did you look at the bill of quantity?
We centered our argument based on the award letter.
You didn't look at the bill of quantity. Did you have any engineer or a concrete engineer look at your petition before you submitted today, Senator?
Yes, we actually looked at it and we centered this argument on the award letter.
So all this petition is based on the award letter? You didn't look at the technical document, the bill of quantity, the scope of work?
Okay, sir. It's not based on award letter in all.
No, no. So you scoped the project based on the title?
No. It's not based on the title.
Based on what?
The award letter specify where.
No. The award letter is specifying the title of the project.
And then secondly, in this year, in this year's state. Let me read it.
Answer my question straight to me.
I'm answering the documents.
Did you look at the scope of work? It's a yes or no answer.
I look at it through.
Award letter? No, no. Award letter does not define.
I look at it. Sorry, sir. Sorry, sir. I look at it through the commissioning presentation.
Did you in any way, anytime check the bill of quantities of this project? No. I respect this.
You're welcome, petitioner and the respondent. Petitioner. There's one thing that I drive joy from your petition. The joy is that Nigerians are working on to demand what belongs to them. That's your message. But on the other hand, I want to advise our Nigerians for working on the school. But another thing is that we should demand proper content. Do you listen to me? You had his question. You had his question. So and I want to tell you, please. I'm speaking from experience, in practice, and in knowledge. I practice engineering in the fellow of the States and I'm a fellow of the Nigerian Center for Engineers. What is required? The name, the name does not spell job. But the scope is in the bill of quantity when they sculpt it. You can use the name, but then maybe they are to stop at a bank before your commitment. What they named is not the issue, but what is the content of the bill of the quantity? That's what you are not signed. So I have to advise you. In such a situation, you invite a professional to look into what you are advocating for and advise you rightly. And my opinion is we may not have much to discuss here than to invite Minister of Works, who will come and tender to us the scope of work, the job. And that SC finally know that they have to it. Next of all, we'll come and tender the scope. And we know that what they will bring to us, whom this article typed today, it must have been typed, written before and we will know. And on the other hand, too. Trap. Yes. And just in your document. Now. It is if we decide, we can only go through the the submitted BEM, that's bill of engineering estimate and measure and evaluation. But why we will not judge you by the BEM is the BEM is being submitted by you. I'm sorry. You are going to give it to us before us. It's not one. So as long as you are telling it to us before and not Minister of Works, who will not use your BEM. It might be a correct or not say whether it's correct or wrong. But you will not use it. So the answer is Minister of Works will come here and they will tell that the BEM for this project. And that's the end of the mission. And Minister of Works will tell us too, even if they say it's one hundred and eighteen kilometers. Whether they downgraded it later due to high rise in prices, which they don't want to violate or vary or otherwise. Are you getting that point? So all the our judgment in this matter is dependent on Minister of Works and this matter will not take us more than thirty minutes for an hour with Minister of Works. Thank you for the chairman. Apparently, there shouldn't be anything to add. However, just to avoid a situation where it will be reported or perceived as senators or Senate committee dismisses petition. Let me start by appreciating the Tunga Development Association. I can see your passivity. I can see your tenacity. Starting this process of petition to twenty thirteen, that's about eleven years ago. And you're still on it. It shows the passion that the community will have for the development of your Tunga or your community. It's extremely very competitive. And for you to have made appearances before the various committees of the Senate, you have gone to EMCC, you have gone to SCPC. I mean, for me, if all our communities are this passionate and committed to the development of the respected communities, we probably have had a more responsive and accountable project and situation in the mission. So I must commend for all of this effort. And I must also commend the contractor for also coming up. Let me give an example from local state and I'm going to use an example that you have committed. The Lagos-Badra Express Road. There are two contractors in that road. When you read the contract document, it will say Lagos-Badra Express Road. The whole section of it from Lagos to Songia and Shagam was given to a contractor. The other part was given to another contractor. But the title of your road in the two contracts will read Lagos-Badra Express Road. However, when you go there into the specifics of each contract, you will see that the BEM to the special portion is from Lagos to Songia and Shagam. The RC suite, you will see that that portion is from Shagam to get to Ibaro. So for you to have put this industry, just a little more industry will have revealed to you that the contract title may may have read a long, had a long title that covers your communities. What I suggest we do is what my colleague has suggested. We need to call this work to be to closely put a closure to this. But that is one little part of it. The second part of it, I'm there. Enjoy to do the same passion you have done to this. Put the same effort into reaching out to your legislators to now put a section that should get to Tunga in the project. And this is right to do so. The project preparation for 2025 has not commenced. Your legislature board in the Senate and the National Assembly. For you to have come this way, I'm sure if this comes home in the course of project preparation, they will have a number of subtitles. But for those of us who have seen the tenacity you have put to this in the last eleven years, also. So that if there's a closure in terms of we cannot, we cannot hold a contractor responsive for what was not contained in the bill, in the scope of work. However, what we can do is reach out to your legislators and see whether they can break this off as an item that would be included in the project for 2025. Because we have done this for eleven years. I have a feeling that if you have put the same commitment to it, perhaps because the federal government put it, it probably will have also occurred that. And for the contractor, thank you for staying within the scope of the work. People have to speak. If there's any penalty they can do, not as an obligation now, but as a CSR for the portion, I mean for the remaining portion of the road. It's a hundred and eighteen kilometer road. What we have to get through is eighteen kilometers. Maybe there's some twenty twenty kilometers are left. If there's something to penalty we can do for them, it also has a get on of goodwill and to also appreciate the passion and the commitment of the Tunga Development Association. Please do for them for the sake of harmony and for the sake of the fact that these people have shown an honorable commitment, even if they have a misunderstanding of what the contract between you and the federal government. As Senator Chairman, I fully agree with my colleagues. Let's get the federal minister of Work to sign off conclusively of this. But as a Senate, we must be seen, to be fair, to be just, to be equitable to all the parties that are here talking. And thank you and God bless fair and good to Nigeria. All right. Thank you again for coming and to hear from the experts. That's the thing with the Senate. You are professionals in all fields that are now senators. And so they have brought their expertise to bed. But again, like I said, we have requested federal minister of Works to clarify this matter. And so what I think we're going to do now?
And so, what I think we're going to do now is to adjourn this matter, send it to the high until we hear from the Federal Minister of Works. If anything is different from what we think it is, then we will invite others back again. Otherwise, we will give back to you the writing of our decision. Is that understood? My colleagues of Baru, I'm the senate who wants to be here on the main works to come and speak to us on this matter. And so, we are going to come, we'll give back to you, uh, when we sit again on this matter. We hope that it's going to be a very short one. All right, this is very close. Thank you. So, that'll be the, uh, this shortness committee, and we have proposed a best date for our, uh, this very matters, I just say that. There's a letter of withdrawal of this matter by all who are all familiar. Who's the petitioner? Who's the petitioner? And the letter is before us. And the, the two senators whose consequences involve in this are to be paid by to confirm that this letter that they have drawn, uh, a case against the, uh, this commissioner. So, I request, uh, that we should track up this matter as, uh, as another has been recorded, uh, to support, to support that.
Best. In terms of parties, Mr. Friday, hours. That is Nigeria's work operation. This is the guy here.
And the party is present?
Certainly the respondent.
Who's the respondent?
The petitioner.
The respondent is, uh,
Friday, Mr. Friday.
Nigeria's work?
Yes.
How many notices have we sent to Nigeria's work?
Since the, since the second year. Not. That one, they came for another person. And against Nigeria's work. So, with this one, the last meeting we had, this one came over. To the fourth. Nigeria's work, they said that that happened. Like, they have been about, about this matter, so they asked to win the dispute. So, the relative cannot provide about this one.
So, have you sent any notices to Nigeria's work?
Yes.
Of the hearing today?
Yes, sir.
And you have, so what, what I want to establish, is it the second notice?
Please, the second notice.
The first notice, they don't have?
They care.
But it's also another matter?
They care for another matter. This one, when they said that that happened, any pressure that they are asking, they noted. They said that that is out.
So, so, uh, they give you an opportunity to come again today?
They are here.
They are not here.
They are not.
Mr. Friday, hours. Friday, hours. You still on route?
No, not yet, hours.
Hi. Friday, hours. Please somebody, I find that the evidence I gave before this is wishful thinking. But we do truth, we would, and we will do so equally. When you went to leave, you leave Abuja?
No, sir, Friday. Actually, I didn't desire, desire to kill my people there for this.
Yes, sir. Now, the last time I'm sure to collect, the last, the first hearing on this matter. Nigeria's work operation were here, but the same thing, they were not seized on the issue of that particular case. And they came for another case that was, that was before us. And so, we give you another opportunity to now come today, so we can get the case, uh, for us. They are not here. So, this, this is the second notice that we will send to them. I don't really want to, want us to continue on this matter when they are not here. Because they are entitled to fail or they are entitled to, to be heard. Uh, but if by the time you send the notice again to them and they are not here, then we still will know what to do on that. So, Although, obviously, you do from the, the, the one that we actually charged to court. It's not me. This is the second hearing of this matter. Uh, the work operation is not here today. And for us to have seriously to give this matter a fair, both sides. We request, uh, to stand with us, ask you to adjourn this case, to ask Nigeria's work operation to appear in the next day. I, I know I feel because that's why I asked the reference in Abuja. And so, the trouble, the concern to be here, uh, we are, we are happy, we are grateful for that. And we still want to make sure that by the time we give, uh, uh, fragments here, that is something that is, uh, that is, that is fair on both parties. And so, indulge us to adjourn this matter and then help the work operation again to come and, uh, to stand there in case of effect, the petition will happen with them. So, you have a chance to tell us.
That's Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I don't know, the, the last time, they, they actually demanded him on behalf of, uh, the management of Nigeria's work. Couldn't respond, I remember very well, you asked him, he said he was not briefed on the matter. He can't say they were not aware. The task was sent to the visit leader King Lit. And this sitting, those who are aware of the rule, who are prepared to about this matter would be here. And I remember very well, you say, you want to take a date here. And you told them that they are not here on this meeting, this very meeting, we are going to hold on the matter. I remember you said that very clear, that they are not here now. I, I don't know, but when, you were given a date. Remember, it was even the last chairman, they said, let's give it one more shot. But now, now is what is, that, and they are still not here.
All right, I'm satisfied, but indulge us, all right? But if you don't come again, we don't want you as committee, all right? You don't trust that.
Sir, sorry, Mr. Chairman, one more time, I don't know if, to remind you, if, uh, my own case and that of, uh, uh, Mr. Engineer Patti, Patti, who won the rule on the last meeting. I don't know if it was the same case, same process, you said that, that same case, same process. And, uh, and it's based on that, you say, they only give them one more shot, they should come for the next, which we're giving both of us the dates here. But the second, they were aware, so you see that they are not here, those, they, they.
So, Friday, I'm sure you see, it pays the kneel for the chairman to affect it, uh, to, they said, pacify you. What is important is that they also do not want to make, to come to the conclusion they guessed. We want to be sure that whatever conclusions we reach here benefit from the insights and listen to all the parties. It may appear that your cases are the same, but you don't go to the court and tell the court, I don't judgment to give last week. My case is also similar, just whether I don't have a choice or not, just give me the same, uh, judgment today. You're pursuing what you believe, that your entitlements are in need of relief. Spend some time, the, the people who left just before now, I don't know whether they are here, they are, you know, they are petition for eleven years. If we had done small remuneration or emotions, say, oh, the contractor has not done the work, let's give, uh, some rules, some judgment. You must have missed out on the fine element that will give us a fuller position on what issues are. The same way you said somebody came last week on the other time, and you want to get to the future that same way. In this same matter as well, a court has also convicted something. Will you also want that indictment? Certainly not. So, and that's why your case must be treated on, in some basis. And the only way can do so is also if Nigeria's work corporation does not come for this all time, you will need that to be committed and to decide what needs to be done. So, for the chairman to be explained to you one way again, it's a procedure of the matter. You have come once, you have come twice, and the chairman is also concerned that you are coming from Zaria. But you are pursuing what you think is all right. I can't afford, uh, to be less committed, uh, to it. The chairman will use the scriptality of the committee to invite Nigeria's work corporation again. And I'm sure that time, if they come, we will proceed. If they also don't come, by the grace of God, we will also allow to do so. Mr. Friday, hmm? Just like Friday is last day of the, of the week, so, uh, go and chill out. But if, by the grace of God, you are alive to claim more to entitlement, ah, if you did have entitlement.
So, based on the parties' observation and what my colleagues have said, we will adjourn this case, send it to the high for another day. Please clap on the petition again on the next sitting day. Clap.
The fourth case is Dr. Rudi E. Ozan, medicate by Hansof. Did you press, yeah, you pressed.
This, very good data. Who are all these people here? Who are all these peasants here?
My name is Dr. Sarah Tarp. I'm here to register. I was told the justice. Next to me is, uh, by the, she's a legal byster. Next to her is Fuçman Kama. It was, uh, he, he registered this matter.
Who are you? Please come and sit. Uh, are they expecting to make testimony?
No.
They are not, you are supposed to keep making testimony, and you have to be of authority. The people with you, are they expected to give any testimony? Are they making any submission? Are they going to say anything here? Are they going to say anything here? You guys have a good one. So, the PA committee, what's the PA going to tell us? What's the PA coming to tell us?
Where is Dr. Henry? First of all, you go, go here, where is it?
Dr. Henry is not here, Dr. Henry is on leave.
He's on leave?
Yes.
You have to be there to show that he's on leave. You are on board?
Yes, I'm on board.
Show us evidence that shows, because he is the person that was the advocate for the PA. And he is the main person that the petition is about.
The registrar was invited.
Show us evidence that he's on leave. Is it in your phone?
Well, I didn't know it would be requested, but I think I have a copy on my phone.
Obviously, letter?
Yes. What you just said.
You know, I'm, I'm, are you going to testify? If there's dates, sir.
No, he's not.
No, 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 no.
Well, it's good that, that is wrong, check this place.
Hi, Mrs. Elsman, right, that's me, man. You come to have fun, like the evidence, I shall give before this distinguished committee. Shall be the truth, the old truth and not the better truth, so that you learn.
So, you don't tell us that he's on leave, on vacation, right? You saw you are a standard registrar? That was a registrar. So you have, you have knowledge and information of this matter, right?
By virtue of being a member of the committee.
The answer is yes, you have, are you, can you, can you respond, what was I saying, effectively? To, you responded, have you seen the invitation?
I can.
You can?
Yes, why there is a question?
Okay, alright. Uh, turn to the microphone. Mr. Dr. Ruvvi Ozan, who's not coming to work here?
Um, and Dr. Ruvvi and Dr. Ozan, uh, from United States, uh, this is first of all. Two of them are from Africa, and it's good here, everything I did since Nigeria, I'm glad of the place of Nigeria.
Don't, don't, I'm sure you have never campaigned before. No, I'm sorry, you've not campaigned before. I'm, I'm in Nigeria, I'm from Nigeria, all the race in Nigeria. I did everything in Nigeria. Any one minute, please, yes, one minute. Please allow my colleague to introduce himself.
Thank you, check each other, to the distinguished colleagues, invite them, yes. My name is District Senator Andrew Seapray, Senator, apparently, we will all focus up, a member of the committee, thank you.
Uh, this is not too. Uh, as I said, I'm Dr. Ozan Ruvvi, I'm from United States, I'm in the local government of United States. Uh, I did all my busy calculations here, I'm a pharmacist, I'm a second semester by university. And then, I entered university here, I mean, second year, then considered the University of Otakor before the Opa Sanya administration. Uh, I won a scholarship for us to go to Cuba to study medicine. So, while, as the federal government prepared at the school abroad, so I was very glad, but I very suspended money therefore. So, moved out by the federal minister, and then, the member of the organization, the committee member that helped in that. So, I remember to suspend my studying of medicine in uni board, and I traveled to Cuba through the federal scholarship board to study medicine in Cuba. We are hungry in London, that was, yes, um, that is the year 2000, it happened the year 2000, so.
All of Cuba?
Yeah.
All of Cuba?
Yes, all of us, hundreds today, by the government of Nigeria, to Opa Sanya, we went to Cuba in a federal scholarship. So, we arrived to Cuba, so we studied medicine, we finished in 2007. And we graduated, I think, we are ninety-four, because since we make it to medical career, when they are in Cuba, they advise them to do more in order to like pharmacy, we have got the hand movements. So, ninety-four was maybe to then graduate it, then others like sixty-one, that was one time, for God's sake. So, my matter comes after we graduated, so we, they extended our scholarship, they established us to do postgraduate, that is, to further more in, in your studies. That, after seven years, so, uh, we asked, we write the federal government, they extended our scholarship. So, so while they, they are there, we are fifteen in number, that they were extended, others came back to the country and their doctors here are working. So, they took the number that was extended their scholarship to do postgraduate, and was sponsored by the federal government, because we continue to do that postgraduate. I graduated from that postgraduate school in 2014, that's from 2007 to 2014, I'm pre-postgraduate. So, and then, and I furthered more with experience in surgery, I did surgery as a consultant, as a specialist in surgery, I related as a specialist in surgery. But I have other documents, I have masters, diplomas, and other specialties I have written before 2014, but the last one is surgery. So, I went to London, did some observations, St. George's, to the Broadway, I have documents here, at Great Wall Street, and I part of the Grace School in London, before coming back in 2017. Now, before coming back, most of my colleagues have returned to Nigeria. The first one that returned, they started to return to London Tech, he did only family medicine. And the guy is now, I think, say director of the research department. So, he came in the MDC, that the registration board, registered you in category B. They have category A, B and C, and I think they have B now. So, the category B of registration mean that you come, you present your ID, you have a certificate. Then they usher you in, uh, to register you without exam, to go into the system, to work for three or four years. For the consultant around, you know, if you do your specialty well, then they will graduate to category A. Category A are mainly universities in Nigeria, and some in London, and some in US, that's category A. Then category B, Cuba is there, with other countries like Romania, Canada, and some other countries that are there, category B. But category B, they don't give you a consultant, you try to do a specialty, but they don't give you, they need consultant, or less for three years, or five to twenty years, or three years is the minimum. Before they usher you to be consultant, yeah, that's what the, the law say on there. So, eh, my colleagues, eleven of them have arrived before me, yes. They are, they have been registered, even in 2017, I came back in 2017, July, I sent my registration in there. They registered two of my colleagues that graduated in 2017, they registered, I'm in 2014 graduate, but did some extra studies or working experience in London before coming back, that is, two years experience before coming back. So, they, they were asked eight thousand, I asked my colleagues, is it what you do? See, yes, they did that, they were asked eight thousand, they don't want you to post your documents back to Cuba to verify if this is right or truth of what you are saying. I said, okay, I paid the money, I gave the remit. So, they say, anyway, come in the next two weeks to collect your certificates, license. Ah, my colleagues, that's how they treat them, they come in the next two or three weeks, collect your license as they never input, that's how they take with them. So, but unfortunately, a lot of things happened on the way, so, after spending seventeen years abroad reading, I came back and I meet a colleague of mine, he's a girl. So, the girl, when I came back, said, wow, you have a lot of certificates, you are not going to suit in the system, they will not going to be happy with you. I said, okay, that's no problem. So, he introduced me to the, to one of the staff, they got to work as inspector at that time. So, when he introduced me to the staff, staff assistants, you know, something like that, so we start to know each other, and say, it's going to help me to have my process in the, in the council easy. So, but unfortunately, after the three weeks I should call, after the payment, to collect my license. The person who introduced me is not an inspector now, he become a, what do you call it, a head of registration. So, when I came back, I said, anyway, hmm, that, why am I not calling that my friend? By the way, I stopped calling her, because she wanted us to go back to London, but I'm not going back to London, I came back to see my girls. It's, it's so small in, in Nigeria, I don't want to be back to London, she wanted us to, so I, I separated from her. So, I was not calling my friends. So, she said, why am I not calling my friends? I said, no, 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 I'm not coming, I'm not having a job in Nigeria after seventeen years, I don't want to, I want to concentrate in my, in myself, so I don't want to, you know, say all these things now. So, why sure, he said, okay, there's no problem, I'm just asking you to answer, and that the council is going to be changes. I said, changes, why? He said, wait, they are going to change this, so when the changes occur, eh, hey, I will come out. I said, can, when can I come back? He said, you can come back in one week, don't, although the changes have occurred. Anyway, I keep on coming, I came one more, two more, three more. That thing from, that from August, I paid August 8th, that's why the remit has saved. So, until November, I put, he said, I have been coming here to the council for a long time, for you to issue me my license and other things that I paid. Like my colleagues, they, they was clear, they missed a moment, and you have cleared, in short, barely one month if I came back, the minister's money made you. And even the guy went back, you know why, when she's married to you, you know why? Why, why, you just get the license and move back to the country, I just said, I want to get my, I want in the country, that's it. He said, anyway, we are doing changes, see, those changes have to do with me, eh, he said, wait, wait. In the conclusion, I asked him, can I wear the changes, he said, he wrote to the postgraduate of Nigeria, to know where you're classifying me with all his documents. I said, but my documents came back, do you, do you write them, do you write them? To classify us, he said, no, but my case, is it different? I don't know, I said, man, okay, I wrote it, I don't, can I go to the postgraduate and ask why I made it different? Because I need to do, anyways, I spent three months in Nigeria, I could do anything, almost as a doctor, I have, I'm without, so, okay, he said, you can go and check, you can walk back. I went to the postgraduate of Nigeria, I met there, when I leave there, I met the head, they say, print your documents, everything I gave them, he said, wow, that's fantastic, fantastic, you got people working. Eh, that you don't need to come here, that you have a, a guideline that you are using. That this guideline, that Cuba is there, where is in the category B, why are they sending you here? You need to do the drugs, do the license, they need to have sense. And you come here for, to follow the fellowship of Nigeria, you have the right to write, I want to follow the fellowship of the postgraduate. Now, we have your documents even here, don't take your license with them, they don't need to stop you, you just give them this and they give you that, as they give orders. I said, is it that, I said, yeah, that you, you know, maybe you don't know one, then you have a problem with someone in the, in the system, in MDC. I said, no, 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 you see, you look like you have a problem with someone, you know, then they send you, you have a problem with someone there, I said, I don't have a problem with anyone. Anyway, I may not be, I don't know, I've lived seventeen years, that's what I'm about. So, I left, I came back, and me in the second year of registration, I tell them, they give you, I said, wow, they said, this thing is no need to be waiting and waiting and waiting. That they give me a guideline, that they are using, that it's supposed to be registered, and it's supposed to be registered in this guideline, and Cuba is a category B, as is written here. And then, I should come back to them with a written note that I want to be, not to be finished for Nigeria, then they will usher me in. We, we see they have panel, they think they are needed, they have panel, I don't wish them to, they don't have the subject panel, they have general subject panel. So, that's what I think, he said, anyway, that is waiting for their write-up. Anyway, they didn't give me write-up there, because they said that I didn't come official, so they let me write up. So, later, till, till November eighth, I waited nine good months, without doing anything. They don't, trained by the government, public, but he came back nine months, without doing anything, just going to the council. In short, my dad is in Lagos, I located to Abuja, because I don't have much money, I don't think it's. Okay, so, so what happened really is that, and then, precisely, Mark. As I came there, he said, okay, as I said, it's being delayed, that there can be an option out of it, I said, what is the option? You see, you can do this, eh, medical and dental council exam, that he, as the head, can use it as a message. As they are waiting for the decision to usher all that he has had in the case. I tell him, say, what is the exam? You see, this exam is that six years, wait, maybe six years, medical data exam. I said, okay, if you can do this exam to qualify me after you do surgery, I said, you do surgery, can you use that? I just say, post-graduates, I've studied for seventeen, not for six or seven years, can you use that exam to qualify anything in surgery? He said, yes, and because your colleagues are inside the category B, I said, do they do the exam? He said, no, but they say they are, they, his show is not made, they are still looking, I understand. Anyway, I said, I don't think I'm going to do the exam. Exam is not practical, it doesn't clarify who am I, it doesn't help, it doesn't help to qualify me as a neurosurgeon, and my colleagues are not doing it. I asked him, what I'm going to do, I see some Cuban doctors working in this area, and they are full and full here, and even in your office I'm coming, I see some of my colleagues, they are genius, in Cuba. They come through you, they fast, they enter the system. He said, no, I give them temporary registration, they relate me to two years, eh, they don't need to do any exam, they don't need to do anything. I said, I will give you what you are giving them. He said, no, you are a citizen, you will give me food, I pay for food. I said, I don't want food, I will pay for temporary, like that. If the white guys from any country, from Romania, from Canada, from Cuba, are entering, and many of them are my genius in the school, we brothers from the same school, they are entering, working in the country. He said, no, give me what you give them. He said, no, 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 that's your obligation, that's not me, I don't think that I'm going to do that. Because I, I, it's not what they write in the guideline. So, at last, I start to beg him, because the time of my NYC is approaching. So, I wanted to accept NYC, but he said, I couldn't accept it, my fourth degree, I said, I've been doing it for twenty-six, twenty-seven years, but I got the surgery.
So, what is the problem now?
The problem is that since then, I thought, so when I pushed him, he issued me, and when the NYC is coming around. I came to his office, he said, NYC is coming, I need to do NYC, I've been waiting for this decision, there are no decisions, I'm not going to do this. I said, okay, you can give me, eh, give me one license, as a full registration, to enter NYC, because I wanted the NYC, they still that they're not doing NYC with remit again. My colleagues are there in 2014, fifty-six, they do the remit, they say, okay, they're not doing it with the, that they are doing it with, eh, license. It must be license from MDC before it is, so we need to come back to them. So, I begged him, they need permission for registration for me to just enter NYC. You know, I paid for all these things.
Why?
So, I entered my NYC, the joke is that I entered NYC on April, I entered with only one full registration, I didn't even know, I entered in a back ticket. So, when I reached there to register, I was there, they say, where's your practicing license? I said, we found this practicing license again, this is what they give you from the council, they say, no, it is two. That makes me to stop, but hey, I called him, he said, ah, is it only full registration they give you? Ah, there's another one, I came back to Abuja, I got to check my NYC to still be.
So, they give you that one?
So, they give me the practicing, that's how I entered, the two of them, the two of them, oh, that's still be. I placed my NYC, so when I placed my NYC, I dig my NYC in Asubru, the only neurosurgeon there, anyway, that's one thing I left to give, and so I picked the one that is managing the vote.
So, what is issue now? So, what is issue now?
So, the issue is that my license paid for was not, had not been released. In 2019, after this my NYC, I closed the council again, you know, the license, right? I said, the exam is not meant to write, it's not in the guidelines, you know.
So, you understand you.
So, you wrote something, you wrote a letter.
Excuse me, yeah, if I give you, if I give you this, this time, okay, we'll be talking to tomorrow.
Okay.
So, I will not have overtime.
Okay, let me summarize it.
So, let me understand it, what you are saying now is that you are paying for license that has not been issued to you, is that correct?
Yes.
That, long and short, long and short, and what are you doing now?
So, what are you doing now? Eh, that's why I want to go.
No, tell me now, what are you doing?
Perfectly, I've been working in Asubru Hospital.
As what?
As a local.
As what?
A local doctor.
What's been on the local doctor?
Yeah, that's what you're right, the local means that you are not a full staff, you're under bed, they give me hundred thousand every month, I say, you're surgeon. And this, a lot of people like to work in the general hospital, I didn't work as a neurosurgeon. I worked in Asubru.
Are you working as a neurosurgeon? Now. Now, are you working as a neurosurgeon, sir?
Anyway, I work.
Are you working as a neurosurgeon, sir?
Yes.
You are working as a neurosurgeon?
Yes.
Do it. And you don't have the license to do it, and you are doing it?
Not why I don't do, I don't, I don't, I don't think so, it's not official. I work as a neurosurgeon, but I don't have the license, that's it.
What, what, I, I want to understand you, and I think I do.
Yeah.
Just that, you want to use your, you are working as a neurosurgeon.
Yes.
Then you are not be fully licensed to do so, correct?
Anyway.
Yes, that's, that's. Sir, you heard him, you heard others talk.
Sir.
No, I want to hear, sir, before, before we take that, that's. Mr. is very scared, I don't want to hear you. But this, that's another reason, I would say that. So, talk to me, you heard him, okay? You heard him, this?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, what you have, you say, why you only started to do?
Um, the.
So, my deputy registrar?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
My name, the chairman and the District Senator, as the vice of the committee. My name is Dr. Emo Job, I'm deputy registrar and head department of the professional secretary. The summons was issued to the registrar, uh, CEO, to appear to the, unfortunately, she is not around, she wasn't around when the summons arrived. And she asked me to, uh, represent her, yeah. Um, compared to the fact, by virtue of my. Um, compared to the fact, my virtue of my, eh, being part of the, eh, management team of the Medical Data Council Board. Registration is not by direct schedule. Now, to give you a background, officer. The Medical Data Council is an establishment of an act of the National Assembly. Its functions stated clearly. One of those functions is to register persons who are qualified to practice as medical practitioners or dental surgeons. It is an offense, under the Medical Data Practitioners Act, section seventeen, that any person who is not registered as a medical practitioner or dentist surgeon to practice or hold himself out as one. It is an offense. Now, for the purpose of registration, the act gave the council power to make regulations on the basis of which persons who are qualified and apply to be registered, will be registered. That regulation is made by section six of section four of that act, which is the guideline of registration, number of documents included, eh, there. Persons who, eh, who did not graduate from medical schools controlled by the Medical Data Council of Nigeria. Eh, those, these medical schools are the ones in Nigeria. The act in section nine gave the council the power to aggregate institution, the course, and the qualification from schools for the purpose of, for the purpose of meeting or getting a stream in Nigeria. Now, for persons who qualify outside of Nigeria, there are two categories of such persons. Nigerian citizens and persons who are not Nigerian citizens. Nigerian citizens who qualify and are registered will be registered and given full registration to be qualified. Persons who are not Nigerian citizens who apply will be given, if they qualify for registration, will be given temporary registration. Temporary registration is time bound. The maximum, it's, eh, eh, it stays in two years, and it's attached to an institution. So, a Nigerian citizen is not qualified for temporary registration, it's actually down to the citizenship. Now, for persons who graduate from countries other than Nigeria, that's foreign graduates. The act made provision for the council and the government of the situation to determine whether or not they should sit for an assessment exam, for the council to determine whether their argument and, eh, knowledge is commensurate to what persons who are twenty-eight have. A provision is made for exemption of persons who are already registered where they are coming from as specialists, or they possess qualification that is registrable as an additional qualification which may confine specialist status on the person. Now, in the case of, eh, Uvi, eh, Ozani, he is not, as we speak, he is not registered as a medical practitioner in Nigeria.
Why?
His name is not in the register.
Why?
What he, he presented his, eh, application, as he stated, eh, copiously, in twenty seventeen, himself and two others. And at that time, the determination was that they were not registrable, they were not, sorry, they were not registrable as what we call full without provisional. Full without provisional means that you are deemed to be a specialist that's registered as a specialist where you are coming from, or you possess a specialist qualification that is registrable in Nigeria. Three of them who applied as such were deemed not registrable, and they were advised to write assessment exam. Two of them acceded to that advice and wrote the assessment exam, they passed ultimately, and they were registered. He did not register. Along the way, he claimed to have a certificate of registration, which is dated in Nigeria as a medical practitioner. That certificate was found to not be the valid certificate, because it is not representative of the entry in the register. It is not a valid, eh, certificate.
So, will you transfer that as Quark?
Sir?
You will, you will transfer that as Quark?
A person is a Quark if he is not registered as a medical practitioner and he practices as a doctor.
And, and that's what you think he's doing now, right?
Yeah, in the eyes of the law, he is a Quark.
Okay, do, are you aware that he's practicing in, in a federal institution?
That was the reason why they let the practitioner be written to the police. And, as we speak now, there is a criminal investigation ongoing on the, eh, basis of that, eh, eh, fact.
And what, and what, has, has that been investigated?
It was sixteen, eh, investigated, we are waiting the outcome of that.
If you listen to him, he said, he said, his colleagues, his colleagues that were also trained in Cuba. I'm asking this person because when he made the rule, I, I, I hope that it's not stupid at all. And he said, his colleagues with whom they had a scholarship to go to Cuba, that graduated with him, he stayed back to do a post graduate course, and those one came back home. And that they were registered without exam, is that correct?
What I can say, sir, is, at the time he applied, there were three of them who applied to be registered. And they were told that they were not registrable, they should write the assessment.
That was not the question he asked you.
They were told to write the assessment exam.
That's three of them, but what about those, those who came, those who came with him from Cuba? Who were registered without the exam, is that correct? His classmates, did you, did, those, those?
Do you have, who came with him, who were registered without the exam?
I do not have information on that.
So, if we were to confront with such information?
What I know is that previous, previous, that is before twenty seventeen, when he applied. Persons who schooled in Cuba, in Eastern West countries, and who presented additional qualifications that, in the government of the situation, there is a schedule of qualifications that are registrable. Now, in that schedule, there are for different branches of medicine, internal medicine, surgery, obstetrics, and quality, pediatrics, psychiatry, and.
When did that law, when did that change? What did they?
Seventeen. There are persons who presented such qualifications who were registered.
Okay, so, but, from twenty seventeen, from twenty seventeen onward, that will change?
Was it documented?
Is that, was that, was that a document to show the change of?
I don't have information on that.
No, but.
Sorry, if I may ask, just trying to ask. Eh, you see, is it the law that changed this whole regulation for guideline, eh, guideline? No, no, the law did not change. What changed is, the act gave the council power to make policy, rules, and regulations as it gave necessary. The law did not change, the law has not changed since nineteen eighty-two. And also, just to find out.
Yeah, you said three of them, two twenty-seven, Charlie?
Yes.
And, eh, there were three, but they all had the same qualification, higher qualification than us.
Three of them applied for registration, for registration without provisional, that is, they deemed themselves to be specialists, three of them. Himself and two others, one was, eh, obstetrics and equality, the third one, he was, eh, neurosurgery. The third one, I not remember what his was. But the two others acceded, wrote the assessment exam, passed, and they have been registered. He did not write the assessment exam, does not receive the assessment.
He said, he said he did not write because he came home with an additional qualification, which have maybe others.
No, those other ones too, they also, they also presented their own additional qualification, but they were all deemed not registrable and advised, they were advised to, eh, sit for the assessment exam, so they will be registered. The two others, eh, did the assessment exam, he decided.
Okay, thank you very much, having listened to you. Eh, if the changes were not formed by law, possibly changed by the regulations, can we have the date that change, eh, present, eh, changes came in place? Or came in effect, we don't have the date, it's impossible to know. Whether by memo or whatever.
By memo or whatever, is it assumed that something changed, that's not a question?
I cannot give you the exact date of documents. Like I said, registration is not by direction, our schedule is professional, sorry, but what I know.
Sorry, Mr. Chairman. There are, one of the answers, all from him, he said, we cannot. This one, I is completely, I need say, registration is not, it's not scheduled. It then means we have to keep a person who is not competent to do anything for social, that's all. Has one, one, but the next point is, eh, whether the standard may matter, then the person who is competent enough, are they to cause, are they the person is coming? We should have evidence to show that social dates or social time, the rules for registration changed. And what would date that change came into effect?
Date and year.
Do you understand?
Whether it's secular, whether it's.
One time and nowhere.
Whether it's by regulation, it ought to be written, it cannot be forgotten. So, what are the?
Are you, I'm sorry to ask this question, eh, is doubt in this qualification? Are you, in any way, doubt in this qualification? I personally have no doubt, I take it from connections. Personally, I have no doubt, I take it from connections.
Last man, but representing.
He is saying.
Most importantly, what I'm trying to find out, they are presenting, they are presenting.
Yes, I, I.
So, I want to find out.
I am on behalf of you.
They are aware of his case.
Yes.
Do you believe that he has used qualifications that he has presented before the registration?
I have no reason to doubt that he was trained in Cuba. I have no reason to doubt that, what I know is, at this point in time, he is not registered. His name is not in the register of Medical Practitioners in Nigeria. That I know.
Eh, just two, eh, quick questions, eh. Number one, have there been other registrations of people from Cuba since two thousand and seventeen? Apart from those three people that you mentioned? Eh, and how have they been treated? What I mean is this, three people came in two thousand and seventeen. They were advised to go and write an assessment, two of them acceded and wrote, giving it. Since two thousand and seventeen now, have we had photos from Cuba that possess similar qualifications like we have that have been registered? That's the first question. The second question, he claimed that he was registered with NYC and served on the basis of some license issued by Medical Data Council of Nigeria. And I presume that, eh, you only have been allowed to go to NYC only if you are deemed to have been a medical practitioner. Don't qualify, eh, medical practitioner. I'm not talking about higher qualification now, as a specialist, but I'm talking about the basic medical training. That if you go to NYC, they set up NYC clinics, nightclubs, practices there. Those documentation are usually there, eh, for NYC. Were they from Medical Data Council of Nigeria? Were they, were they issued on the basis of general medical training or the specialist training that is, eh, in this position? So, these are my questions. Since two thousand and seventeen, have there been registration of similar graduates from Cuba with similar qualifications to practice? And those documentation, this is already aware of NYC, were they issued by Medical Data Council of Nigeria?
Eh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. With your permission, let me start by answering the second question. Um, for a person who is a doctor to be qualified to go to, eh, National Services, eh, Commission for the National, eh, Services. He must have a certificate of full registration. That is what the NYC will accept and admit the person into the registration camp. And from May twenty fourteen, the council requested the NYC to enforce that, and they have been doing that since May twenty fourteen. No doctor is permitted to get to NYC without that certificate. Certificate of full registration. Eh, if I may give you, eh, a little insight. There is also certificate of provisional registration. Provisional registration is for immediate graduates who must do the one-year housemanship. It is after the housemanship, they apply for full registration before they can go for, with the National Services. Now, what he presented, and that's why I said, there is a criminal investigation ongoing with the police, was deemed to not have been issued by the council, because there is no record of his name in the register. Every registered medical practitioner, the doctors here, if you ask them, each one has his phone number. It is unique to each doctor. I have mine, it's unique to me, it's, it's registered, no one else in there, it's, and no one else in there at number. What he presented to the NYC that they admitted him into camp from what you see, is invalid. And that was what led to the, eh, it shot to the police that ignited.
But is that invalid? It's a land that would be familiar. A new body transferred from, I'm a, I'm a medical practitioner, so, eh, something can be invalid for non-necessarily, eh, faith. Can you say that?
That could be his value, might be a fact of doing big.
So, it's not, was not issued by Medical and Data Council of Nigeria?
Yes, sir.
Is there a answer to the second question?
The second question, I can't immediately give you that answer, because I don't know.
Okay, one question, please, I would like to ask my question to the, the teacher, yeah. I, I would like to say, my question to you, the teacher, is, you've heard what he said? Who would like you to do a brief response, that is number one. Second one is, who issued this certificate to you that you used to go to NYC? Today, are you aware, or since you graduated from Cuba and you know some other doctors, have you noticed any other doctor who was issued a full license that didn't write this exam you had?
Thank you, sir, I will start with the last one.
And please make it brief.
Since two thousand and seventeen, I had two colleagues. I want to mention the information, one is in kind of quality, and one is of medical surgery. Registered in two thousand and seventeen, one was of Herbo Valley, and one was of Maine, two thousand and seventeen. The automatic surgery, you see, who are attending people, what, I mean, is in the village. It's an automatic surgery, just for the two thousand and seventeen, you know, really, anyway, I don't want to do, so that's one.
That's all. Did they register them?
They registered them fully, that exam, that exam.
And you have, you know their, you have.
I know them.
Okay.
We know them, who they is in their registration, in two thousand and seventeen. They, they moved before I started my registration. And the main thing is that I paid, when I came, I paid for full registration, all this thing. And that's normal license to go in and, eh, to, to do my NYC. He's just giving me, I paid for it, but I'm begging him, he was giving me, like, small, small. Now, when I finish my NYC two thousand and eighteen, I mean, as, as I was.
You're sorry to beg you.
He's in heaven now, there, there is no giving, it's no giving, it's like, I don't know, you don't want, you didn't know, they are doing meetings. He's in head now, there, there is no giving, it's no giving, it's like, I don't know, you don't want, you didn't know, they are doing meeting, you don't want to come tomorrow. I mean, I went there more than fifty times, begging, everybody knew me, they come to get mine. Begging that something, so, so to conclude it, twenty August, twenty of August, 2019, this, I finished my NYC. And I'm in a circle, I, I did my license in the soldier, very good one. And they retained me to continue my adventure, but they say, ah, no, go on, you have no your additional qualification. Because I give them only the license I receive from them, which is full registration and practicing license. But there's one, they go additional qualification, that's the third license that shows I'm a new soldier. And I paid for that also. So I came to him, say, you have been made the other two now, the other is for general doctor, seven years. The additional, why didn't, they said they needed to go FCT to employ me, no one. You say, uh, I don't do, they never, you do this example, they never, the council never stop, they're not the council decide on you. But anyway, what I can do, I can help you to write up to aid them, that you actually are a practitioner.
Who is this person that gave me that?
Head of registration, that's why.
Do you have a copy of that?
So I go to, I read it.
No, no, no.
From MDC, Medical Council.
Let, let us see what, let's watch what.
So if you see in this letter, I just want you to know, he was telling, he was emphasizing much. That tells him that the license I got is not a fake one. He was telling them that my additional qualification is coming, that means that I have a license originally. So he tell them to employ him because his additional qualification, that's the third license I paid for. He told FCT, employ him because his third license is coming. Now, he's saying that I paid the license. So why should the head of registration write to FCT in nineteen twenty twenty nineteen? That my third license is coming, that means that he issued the first and second license. I can study for seventeen days and take a seven year license. I invest, I invest my money, everything from the federal government training me with poor people's money to come and be faking. And the license he said I paid is a junior doctor's license, that full registration is when you graduate six years.
Alright.
You have it.
So, sorry.
I spent for seventeen years.
Alright, thank you. Sure, one show this.
And another thing that you see.
The thing is that, one thing I want to tell you, you are owed though, some with conscience. Your oath, this is national activity. You are representing someone, but you have to be one that you are owed, and you have to mind your conscience when you speak. And your record, as far as this microphone is on, it's recording everything that is happening here.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, this letter, this letter designed for you.
Okay, thank you very much.
No, 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 I want to skip to that letter, please look at it.
I mean, I just want to.
No, 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 you have the sign, this letter, skip to it.
Yes, there's a copy of the letter, the letter was.
Is, is that letter from your office?
This is the reason why there is.
Is that letter from your office?
It was, uh, supposed to be from my office, but.
That letter, I don't have suspicion, it's either from your office or it's not from your office. Is that letter from your office?
It is not valid from your office, and I need to explain that. Uh, the, the senior secretary reminded me that I'm owed, and I'm very aware of that.
The signature, the signature on that letter, is it?
The signature is that of Dr. Henry Omokele.
Who is Henry Omokele?
He was the head of registration at that time.
And was assigned it?
He is the head of Department of Registration.
And so what does that mean, what does it do?
He is in charge of registration.
So he can register them?
Yes.
Okay, so read that, read that letter out, what you get.
It's addressed to the General Manager, Hospital's Management Board, FCT Director, dated twenty August, twenty nineteen. Reference, additional qualification of Dr. Kovi and Mrs. Ozani. They are both mentioned, Dr. Studi Loro Saki from Cuba, and appointed the Medical Data Council of Nigeria in twenty eighteen. For the registration of his additional qualification. Qualifications for Cuba are registering by the council, but not, but recent development in council. Require that he satisfies the assessment team of medical education before the additional qualification can be granted. This team will be available to meet between October and November, after which time, the, after which time he will be considered for registration. Kindly accord him unnecessary assistance while waiting to fulfill his requirements. Thank you. Thank Dr. H C Omokele.
So I ask you again, that signature, you recognize it, that gentleman who, Henry, Dr. Henry, that wrote that letter? Is or was, uh, is the registrar?
No, not the registrar.
Yeah? The head of registration. The head of registration?
Yes, sir.
Is he on the.
Is the one who is on this, sir?
Okay, yes, what is it from about?
I don't remember the date exactly, but.
Very, do you doubt, do you doubt?
If I may read it, I'll check.
Do you doubt the authenticity of this letter?
Yes.
But you say, you're not saying, I'm, when we get a copy.
It was part of what was served.
Okay.
In the summer.
Okay, do you, so when did you receive the summons?
On sixteen, last week.
Did you, did you, have you had time to read it?
Yeah, I read it yesterday.
When you read it yesterday, yesterday was Monday.
Yes, sir.
So, when you read it yesterday, did you read this letter?
Yes, I saw the letter.
Do you take time out to see whether or not this letter in my letter from that office?
That's what I'm trying to say, sir.
Okay, say.
This letter is part of why even Dr. Henry is subject of that criminal investigation.
No, no, that I'm interested in what Henry is subjected to. If Henry wrote that in his capacity. If Henry wrote that letter in his capacity as the head of regis, of registration. You are not going to charge him with whatever Henry did as a result of that letter. I'm speaking to that letter, if it came from his office, from his desk.
Um, as part of the bundle that was, uh, served.
Part of what?
Part of the bundle of documents that was served with the summons, there's another letter.
But from who?
From the same Dr. Henry.
Who says?
It's, um, an S T five. Now, it's dated twenty, twenty eighth of November, twenty twenty two. It's addressed to the Medical Director, Socon District Hospital, thirty one, just in New York, present. Uh, subject case of a white doctor. Uh, both subject refers, it has come to the attention of Medical Data Council of Nigeria. That Ozani Kovi and Esetu Koo, uh, on is working in the hospital as a new soldier. It is obvious from our record that he was trained in Cuba and has been informed by the council to authorize his registration by writing in the time of Council of Nigeria assessment. You are by this letter ought to stop organizing him, and kindly referring to the council to authorize his registration. His continual engagement with your organization will be seen as insignificant violation of the common political ethics and laws of Nigeria. Please accept the assurance of registered owners, we can thank you. Signed by, uh, Dr. Omokele, it's in H T's registration.
Okay, very good, now, what is this, this doctor from about? Is he still employed by the council?
Yes.
When is he going to?
So, sir, let me check. Uh, he's addressed to museum dot com, Monday, twenty fifth of November, twenty twenty four. Yes, next one.
Are you proposition to you guys give in your access? You don't have that yet?
They had thirty working days. That's what is up in.
Why did it provide that?
On Monday, fourteenth.
So, I mean, um, I don't like to show this. Or I can't like to show that, uh.
I'm not able to.
Well, you can, you can do this. Do you, do you, did you have four to six? One of the submissions you said, there's a, a criminal investigation going on. Two questions. What prompted a criminal investigation, or rather, what is the? Objects, subjects that prompted a criminal investigation? And when did this commence?
The criminal investigation was facilitated by this second letter of November, twenty twenty two. That, um, caused the, uh, people at Socon District Hospital to disengagement. And after he was disengaged, he had to be reported to the police. Invitation was written to the police and he was, uh, retained. But in the course of the investigation, the police also deemed it necessary to take Dr. Henry's own, uh, statement under caution. And that's why I kept pointing out that there's an ongoing investigation which we register. By the way, the registrar just took office in, uh, effectively, uh, end of February. She took office and she met this, uh, matter. So what is being awaited is the outcome of that criminal investigation. If it's cleared, then the, uh, application will be viewed and you will register if.
Let me ask you, sorry, is, is cleared of what? I, I, I'm getting. Cleared of what? So you register him until it's cleared without writing the exam, then you write before? But this is what you just said. That's, that's the question I'm trying to, I'm trying to get at now. The understanding I had before, actually, calling some, was that it presented qualifications that are not registering unless you write some exams. That was my first understanding. Uh, that understanding was reinforced by the fact that you said there were three of them. Two people wrote and some people you are registered. And I had a understanding on one side. On the other side, I also get another understanding that even the basic medical qualifications. Including the certificate of registration and license that I use for NYC. Were not valid. And I was, and I asked a very more direct question, is it valid or fake? And I got the answer from you that they were fake. Meaning that you have the actual qualification as a subject of, uh, inquiry. But even the basic one that they tried you to serve was also being investigated. In between, we have two seemingly contradictory letters from one, one person from your organization. Saying that, oh, we're waiting for our assessment team to see him for additional qualifications. But at that letter, he didn't say that his info is basically registration was invalid or was fake. But that the actual registration, our team will meet in October, November, and hopefully be qualified for, like, sure for additional certificate. In the meantime, kindly assisting, uh, that's what I had. Then, there was another letter in November, twenty twenty two, from the same period. Now saying that he's a white doctor. What seems obvious to me now is that, that a issue of registration of Dr. Uh.
Henry.
I mean, groovy, groovy, in one breath. And also have some doubt about if you have to beg people to get some registration, to get registered. I am a licensed practitioner, I used to sit on the Council of Medical Professional, Professional Council of Nigeria. And I also know that every professional organization will have a process of being administered into the profession. And they will give you the unique number and you see to sign off to say, well, uh, Chairman is a lawyer, I'm sure the council of regular education also have a process of admitting people. If I have the qualifications, I won't have to beg, uh, to, to be administered, admitted into the profession. Okay, now, so, there will be some problems on this side, and I'm not, I'm without prejudice to what we know or have data. But it also does this to me, that within the Medical and Data Council of Nigeria, there must, there seems to also be a greater problem. And, uh, we must also be very clear that we are also not covering some individuals within the Medical and Data Council of Nigeria. Either for negligence, for compromise on the process. Therefore, you have two, two vices colliding, okay? One might be external, one might be, another have a problem with Medical and Data Council of Nigeria coming to new regulations. They do require a new law, the law that establishes gives its power to regulate. Last year, people go to Togo, go to the Republic and come to Greece. Between last and now, the federal government of Nigeria says, oh, we have seen cases of, uh, racketeering, no new laws passed by National Assembly. Yes, the enter start to group contains enough information to say, okay, that's what, if you come to this, this article from, uh, Togo or, uh, Bali. It don't matter whether somebody was admitted with that same people last year, and have come and has a cut off, it don't matter. So, I am not, I am not, uh, I'm not a pass to Medical Data Council of Nigeria saying, we are joined in line. But in join that line, I want to be sure that I am not drawing the line to exclude a particular person. Uh, uh, and therefore, uh, using my deposition, uh, of the law to discriminate against a particular, uh, individual. And that's why we are asking questions, subsequent to that decision, where there are people from Cuba that we are, are registered. He also didn't have either enough courage to say, oh, there was a guy, there was a fanat, there was a addict. If he also had enough courage, maybe there was also a case of, uh, conflict of, uh, emotional interest, uh, uh, in a particular. But again, we will deal with the facts as that presented to us. I'm not to those, that's regulated, as to whether or how. So, Medical Data Council of Nigeria, the honor is on you to clarify three things. Number one, that it is indeed true that there was a new regulation that prescribes some entry requirement. And those entry requirements that they equally, fairly, and justly abide. The honor is on you, not on him. Two, to also ensure that within your system, someone has also not undermined. The process for pecuniarily benefit. Now, in order to provide a cover up, you want to visit the punishment on Groovy or any other, uh, uh, caliber. And lastly, and I need to say this very clearly, whenever there's a sum of National Assembly, it overwrites vacation. Particularly when the career of in Nigeria is involved. This is a case that has been offered so that, and I'm not making a case whether this is right or wrong, but I'm saying. If somebody has been sent on scholarship by Federal Government of Nigeria and has spent six or seventeen years out. If qualification has a problem and it has lingered on for this long, and the National Assembly has invited to come and clarify it. The new registrar inherited both the assets and the liabilities of that office. And it's also important for her to show, to, to attach importance to this matter. Number two, Mr. Henry, and, and I need to say the permission of Chairman. If it's, if the summon is issued again and it doesn't appear, we will issue a warrant of arrest of him. Because it's very central to this, we don't want anybody that come, and when they are coming, Mr. Chairman. From the registrar, that whoever is involved with the process of registration, uh, inspector, whatever it is. We want to see full complaint here, so that the matter will be resolved, most, and for, and for, and for all. So, Mr. Uh, Mr. Groovy, we are listening to you, and I, I can, I maintain it very clearly now. The Medical and Data Council of Nigeria, the honor is on, did not follow the entire due process. Either Mr. Henry or whoever has issued this letter. It was when it was discovered that another letter was now, you also need to complain with us. That's my assumption, Mr. Chairman.
But was the last.
You, and the question still goes back to the question. I, I didn't hear you in all.
I didn't hear you in all your submissions talk about this police and fraud investigation. Were you invited by the police and what do you know about this investigation? Where is the investigation at the moment? Have you been called or have you defended yourself?
Thank you very much, thank you very much for asking. I didn't finish my talk, that's why. Started when I made the former registrar, the one that is retired, not this one. When I met him, I said, wow, your file is here. Why are you, why is he writes a letter to me and explain to me why you are not being registered? I wrote a letter as a novice. I wrote the letter to M D C, they didn't even recognize it. They took the letter without stamping the receipt. But I keep on coming to the M D C to know, to see the registry again, to know the word about the letter. And they didn't accept me again, they didn't want me to see the registrar. Till like a month after coming there, like up to fifteen or twenty times, the secretary of the registrar called me in meeting in the head of the department's office, in which he is also there. Everybody was there, not the registrar. They say, well, they want to discuss this letter I wrote that's against registration. And they started to, there's a bit of insult there. You see, they are more grateful and stupid. I said, no, 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 I'm not, I'm a consultant, I've studied seventeen years. Everyone here was, I've been a doctor for six years, but it's not an insult. The General Hospital, people can be in my house office, I've been training you something. And that I can be sued with the insult. I left the meeting. As I'm going down the meeting, is when the arrest started. They arrested me. They say that I'm holding a fake document inside the council. I said, but I've been coming here. Why didn't you arrest me for long? Now that I moved out from that meeting, you arresting me? They say, okay, they arrest me straight to Apple Police Station. That's the first police place. When I arrived there, they be, they be, oh, someone who are not move out of the city, down, call the registrar, the council, they come and arrive. The problem with you is that you're a son of nobody, that's why if you are my son, I will jail all of them. Talk, you can sit down or you go. They called the devil, they came to arrest me, make why I'm there. I didn't go to the prison, they just detained me. They came, they wrote, they write, I'm about to go and the police showed me what they do. Anyway, the police have their ways, you know, they did their something, they say, go. So they showed me what they do. But the first thing I get for this, one, the certificate is fake, that Dr. Groovy had a fake certificate. Secondly, that Dr. Groovy had forged a license. And number three, that he's impersonating somebody's license. The police showed me, I didn't take a photo of him, let me see what they are attacking. So I left, so my lawyer advised me, the police will not handle this, they will not take care of this. Don't, don't, if you go there, repay them, go always. The next thing I heard, sir, is that they invited me to D S S, in F I B. I said, what? I'm not the one, I was calm, I was...
So what was the outcome of it? Who was the...
Yeah, the outcome that reached at the F I B, F I B investigated it, they have the copy of this. They have another new one.
What you can now say?
They say I'm free, you know, they tell me say the number of the license is valid.
They say what?
They say that the number they give that is the person who find the license is not, the person is, the number is not ringing, the person is not existing, that the license was passed, it's mine. Because that they use number, another person to, they, you know, they dismiss me.
That's it, that's fine, thanks for this. I would just want to hear you and that's it. Now tell me what you can say. So let me tell you, you have something to say, right?
Yes, sir. On the status of this investigation, the legal advisor will speak to that.
Okay. Thanks, sir.
Good evening, everybody. This is Abdul Basim, legal advisor. When the new registrar, human board, when she has human office, she directed me to follow up on the police investigation on Dr. Groovy. I sent them to remind, I requested for the old letter I was sent to the police police station. And I wanted to remind and attach that other letter. It took me a while, it took a while, but eventually it did, it's all after many months. In the response, the only request for additional documents. The aspect to send this, this certificate copy of the certificate. This is the registration certificate that I attached to the letter. So I went to the archive and the physical and the E A archive. In the E A archive, we don't have it in the dashboard. In the databases, then in the physical archive, there was this file I saw, but it does not have a registration number. It was just open for policy or administration purposes. And it's just the petitions and the letters that kept going from and that that were in the file. So I sent them what I have and I've since then not received any response from them. So it's still work in progress, the investigation has not been completed. Police are still...
All right, thank you very much.
Chairman, sir.
Yes.
I just wanted to point out some of that. The distinguished editor spoke earlier. When we receive the samples, it invited the registrar seeing you to attend. So if we are aware that she was supposed to bring some persons, they would have been late to come, wherever they were. So I'm just trying to put that on record. Then two, I also need to point out that a person does not have registration of additional qualification turned in room, and that is why it is called additional qualification. You are first registered as a medical practitioner. Then if you have qualifications that are deemed specialist, they are added as an addition to that primary registration. But what your registration is, is as a medical practitioner. I want me to clarify, that's why I should not look at it, there are two separate registration processes.
All right, thank you. Thank you very much. I think we were just simply looking at this matter. You led my colleagues, you really dissected it. And I'm sure to that you got everyone of us thinking that we are going to adjourn this matter for to complete a total hearing of the facts of the case. Because there are certain individuals that must be here for us to seriously look at this case and come to a reasonable conclusion. And so we are asking, please take a, uh, counselor. Counselor, please take a pen and paper and write this for me. We need a copy of the secular regulation of memo stating the change of regulation. A copy of your secular or regulation or memo which stated the changes of of regulation, of, 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 um... Regulation criteria of doctors. What the record of those doctors trained in Cuba that were registered between twenty ten and twenty twenty. Dr. Harry. Dr. Harry was the owner. Dr. Harry Opopo Kenyatta. Dr. Harry, Seopoko Kenyatta. The Assistant Registress to Head Registration Department must be present in the next hearing. The registrar, present registrar will have to attend, must also attend. That's why you should have the counsel. Are we clear? So please, in the next hearing, we need these documents and these personalities, so please attend. You know... Are you still working at Asoko Road?
At Loco.
At Loco? Yes or no? Yes or no? I still work at Loco.
No. I resign. I'm not a doctor, I resign.
That's fine, that's fine. The date of hearing will be communicated to you. And please, we really don't want to use the power here to compel anyone to come by issuing a warrant. This is very important and the importance, see, this committee, we are here for citizens. Every Nigerian will feel aggrieved. We're sorry. And we'll afford our Nigerian every opportunity to air his grievances and then we'll look into that. And that's what we are doing here. This doctor, you cannot understand why we feel, why you feel the behavior. That's upon his judgment. There has not been a way to practice fully his profession. That's what I said, I don't understand. It's not that he's not qualified. He was even sent abroad by the federal government, trained by, trained by the federal government. Unless of course there is something indicated that all is certainly from human law, doctrine, faith, then I think there's something that you need to tell us when there's to come to this hearing. Doctor, you... Doctor, prepare yourself for the next hearing. Hopefully, that will be the final accusation of this matter. All right? So it's going to communicate to you to vote parties on the date of the next hearing. And please, it's not going to be an excuse that Dr. Harry is on vacation, that will not be an excuse. It's not an excuse, he has to be here. And that is the order of this committee.
I'm a member of the committee. This case is between Dr. Ala Min Usman and Dr. Ado Wasawit. This is Medical and Dental Council of Nigeria. In the first year of this committee.
Dr. Alme.
Let me come, baby.
Yes.
Let me come. You pay on said shit, Alam.
I, Abdul Basim Ahmed. To sort of this way that the evidence I shall give before this is established. Shall be the truth, the gold truth. So help me God.
Dr. Alme. Have you heard already?
No, no.
Have you heard already?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Dr. Alme. Good to have you here. This is the first, this is the first call. Okay. Tell me, please tell the committee who are here.
Thank you very much, distinguished Senator Nida Banner. Other distinguished senators here present, ladies and gentlemen, would you be known? I am Abdul Basim Ahmed and I am here representing Dr. Ala Min Usman for the petition against Medical and Dental Council of Nigeria and the abolition of continued work after twenty four hours called, a regulation of doctors' working hours in Nigeria. Dr. Ala Min Usman and Dr. Abdul Musabul Ahmed are both concerned citizens of this nation who held from Nasrawa Luka government here out, Nasrwa State. And then Kasida Luka government here out.
Sorry, what's is your name?
Abdul Basim Ahmed.
Abdul?
Abdul Basim Ahmed.
So you're not, you're not Ahmed, you're not as soon?
I am representing Dr. Ala Min Usman.
As who? As the lawyer?
No, as we signed the petition document.
Are you a doctor?
Yes.
Are you part of this, are you one of the practitioners?
Not among the two names here.
No. Are you...
I'm Dr. Obama Hassanza.
Are you part of the practitioner?
Yes, they are two thousand.
Your name is here. Your name is a practitioner?
No, I'm representing Abdul Musabul Ahmed.
Who are, who are they on here?
They are presently out of the country when the invite was sent and then they are... Sir, they are currently running their master's program in the U K. And I think based on them, they've communicated with the crack about their apologies for their inability at the moment.
Because the living site is a charge on behalf of the... The living site is... All right, the petition is not on behalf of a doctor.
It is, sir, the petition is on behalf of four thousand five hundred signatures.
Are you a member of that four thousand?
One hundred.
Five hundred?
Yes, sir.
Are you a member of that four thousand?
Yes, sir. The petition was printed online, signed online, and then the result was put to you later, submitted to you, sent to you.
Okay, this is all good advice. You go to go back, bring this petition again, not people that aren't here. Your names, so that you can speak, not four. You're not on yourself and on behalf of who they're representing. These two gentlemen, they're speaking on behalf of, pardon me, they are out of the country. One or three thousand. So that's our advice. The petition, it can represent them, but to be, you, both of you, unsigned, unsigned, not, all right?
Okay.
We don't want to go beyond that. And that's the order of this, you see, this case, Stu and John, obviously, they represent the petition. So how to come to the end of this hearing? Now we can complete the activities of the day. This committee is adjourned, send that.